It being on or just past 7:00 p.m., we have a Foxborough, pardon me, Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. Planner's report, Ms. Plannin?
Yes, I'm gonna whip through this because we're gonna try to stay on schedule tonight, a lot on our agenda. But you do have copies in front of you. So the MBTA communities, I've mentioned that, that the guidelines are out. And I'm gonna be presenting an overview of these guidelines to the Board of Selectment at their October 11th meeting. I'm hoping that the Planning Board will zoom in or attend, and we can post it if need be, because I think it's important that the two groups discuss this, these guidelines, and sort of what the town's gonna do about it as a, sort of collectively, so that we can figure out how to respond and, you know, next steps, whether, you know, how we decide how the compliance is going to happen. And I think it's something that the two boards would want to be involved in. So I'll try to remind you, but if you can, mark your calendars for October 11th. Zoom is always available, so if you aren't able to make it, you can always just zoom in. The Affordable Housing Trust Committee has been reactivated, and we'll be meeting Monday night to discuss a request to use some funds towards the Walnut Street project. Currently, that, that fund originally had $320,000 in it. I believe 37.5 has been spent, and is now 282,500. As you recall, that was originally established in 2014, and there really hasn't been a clear use of it, so we're thinking that, well, some people are thinking that it might be good to use some of those funds towards the Walnut Street project. Tracy is the Planning Board's representative on that committee, so she'll be attending the meeting. 119 Moore Street, that comprehensive permit is still under review. The next hearing is scheduled for September 29th, and all materials are available on the ZBA website. Uptown Parking, if you recall, in the spring, we were talking about it. We've been working on that throughout the summer, although a little slower. We had to wait to, we could, the fiscal year to turn over, so we could, we're now in the process of ordering additional signs. We've been discussing trash containers on Central Street, because we've seen, you know, as business picks up there with the bakery, and Gunther Tootie's Subway, and Foxborough Nutrition, we are seeing more trash generation along the Central Street stretch. So we met with Chris Gallagher and been talking about that. Another positive development is Schneider Electric has generously allowed us to use about 40 more parking spaces at the Schneider Uptown Lot, so that will be in place in the near term. And the Common, having been upgraded with electrical service this past year, we're gonna have a beautiful light display this winter, so it'll be exciting. Some of the businesses will probably be getting involved, so I think you're really gonna see a, something special going on uptown. I've included the meeting schedule for the rest of 2022. Conferences and meetings are starting to pick up again, as we go back to in-person. On Wednesday morning at 7:30 a.m., or 7:00, Bill Keegan and I will be making a presentation to the tri-town chamber. We do this every year, and so that's, it's a great way for the Mansfield, Norton, Foxborough to get together, and the business is there to talk about economic development. There's gonna be a Regional Planning Agency Conference on September 29th for half a day. I'm gonna go to that. That's in Worcester. And then Gabby and I are going to the Rhode Island Convention Center, October 6th and 7th. Finally, the Southern New England American Planning Association Conference is back in person, and that's a great one for me in particular, because I have to get, I have to do continuing ed, so that's kind of where I get some continuing ed done. But it's great for us to be able to go, be with peers, and sort of talk about all things planning together. And then lastly, I'll be on vacation from November 14th through the 18th, not visiting the Queen.
But in London.
But in London, but yes, not visiting the Queen now. She's, unfortunately, I'm not, she's not gonna be available. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anything under active subdivisions, Cam?
Well, just wanted to give an update on Lawson Farms. As you know, we've been getting weekly progress reports on that. You know, they have done some curbing and some sidewalks, and apparently the new light pole is coming, what, in a month? So, you know, we are staying on top of that. I just want to make sure that there were no concerns from the board at this point or any comments. We do have to, he's supposed to be meeting with the tree warden, I believe, this week to start ordering the trees. He did contact him previously, but they said they talked after Labor Day. So he is on track. He has, I believe, started Phase 2, and, you know, at least the clearing part of it. So we're staying on track. We did have the neighbors concerned about connection to open space, but in the decision, it's actually the developer's option to do that, so I did let them know that it really is not our, you know, we have to live by the terms of the decision, as does he. So for right now, it's not really a Planning Board jurisdiction issue. So that's all I have on Lawson. But I just wanted to bring that up and let you know we're continuing to monitor that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Under action items, we have minutes for August 11th. Did anyone have any corrections or clarifications on those minutes? Has everybody read them?
Yep, I'm good.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for August 11th.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is a change of ownership at 325 Foxborough Boulevard.
Yeah, I could just whip through this one. Oh, we have someone on screen, but I'm gonna try to do this quickly. That this is the existing site, 325 Foxborough Boulevard. It was most recent, or it's currently owned by GE, and I believe it's vacant, or looks close to vacant when I was out there. And we have a new owner, and there's an old permit from 1999 that stipulated that any change of ownership would require Planning Board approval. So I, you know, we've been dealing with the legal team on this, and I didn't think this was a big deal. The exciting news is that there's a firm buying it, or a company buying it, and then they already have a tenant moving over from Mansfield, and they're probably gonna be coming in to apply for more parking in the future, which tells me there'll be employees there, which is great, because as you know, we've been worried about the occupancy of those buildings and what the future of offices are. So I think it's a great opportunity for Foxborough to have their, you know, an existing office building occupied and revitalized, because right now, it's kind of looking a little sad over there. So, just to give background, I don't know if there's anything more to be added, but that's pretty much the gist of it. So it's really just a vote of the Planning Board to allow this change of ownership. Everyone okay?
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the change of ownership at 325 Foxborough Boulevard from GE overdue Calari Properties.
I'll second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good.
Thank you very much.
Update on Porinette Road?
Gabby, do you?
You have a copy of the memo that I, I sent to the board. Scott Shippey, the Building Commissioner, and I did a site visit on August 18th, and there are some, there's a couple of pictures that I passed around showing what the plantings were that were installed at the top of the hill. If, if you remember, we talked about installing trees to stop the movement of vehicles, the access from the top of the hill, the house, to this area. We had discussed that there were 68 trees that should have been planted on the site, but only 21 are shown on the as-built plan. And so there is a large deficit of number of trees. There were two spruce trees that were planted in between two pine trees, I believe. Those were the new plantings that were added. I told the, Mr. Sullivan that I did not have the authority to say whether or not this was satisfactory, so I'm presenting it to the board for your comments.
In my opinion, it is not satisfactory.
These, well, first of all, I mean, the initial thing was to install Green Giant Arborvitae's, Fuji Green Giants at six-foot height. Those clearly don't look like they're six feet tall, and they're just inadequate. I mean, frankly, I don't think there'd be any problem getting a vehicle between the tree on the right, between that and the pine tree next to it. So, you know, it's not really, it's not doing what it needs to do. And there was supposed to be fencing, too. So if, 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 if the board doesn't feel that, you know, fencing is an appropriate, an appropriate thing to do because of need for repair and cleaning and et cetera, et cetera, I can get that, but those two trees are not the answer.
Well, you had voted previously to have a fence plus trees.
Right.
I think at the meeting, I think that the fence was...
We pervert trees over a fence.
Right.
Yeah, that, that to me is not.
That's insufficient.
It's completely insufficient. Now, I know we asked him to have a lighting plan submitted, which he did.
He did, yes.
He did a phonometric, yeah.
He did a phonometric, but our concern was the lighting on the outer perimeter, because he really just lit up the building versus the parking lot. So I mean, it's great that we have this, but I don't know if, you know, the amounts on the outside is adequate from a safety standpoint.
Well, this will be the safety of his employees.
Right, the only thing at this point, I think, if you wanted to, is whether you wanted to ensure there was no off-site glare, you know, that you don't see a zero up to the property line. But I think you can see that there is, you know, lighting in the parking lot for his employees through this phonometric.
Okay, and there's no residential on either side, correct?
Correct.
I, I know that it's noted in here that, that he removed the vehicles that were parked up there, and I just think it should be conveyed to Mr. Sullivan that that's to stay that way, unless he applies for a permit.
Yeah, that was discussed when we were up in the sidewalk.
And I, yeah, and I went up to the building first week in August, and he had a vehicle parked up there, so.
So what do we want to do? Do you want to be more specific on plantings and trees? How many plants and trees do you want up there?
I guess the point is, there's considerable ambiguity there, seemingly sanctioned by, you know, our inspector due to ledge on the site.
No.
So I don't really understand exactly where we stand, where we lie on our numbers right now.
Well, yeah, right. There was, it was clear that he couldn't put the trees where it was originally proposed along the back of the building because of the ledge.
Right.
The point we're making is, is that there's sort of like a credit of trees, like he has not put all the trees on, and that's quote-unquote "okay," but certainly, I think you can require up to that number anywhere you want on the site and/or, you know, maybe not even that, I mean, we don't need that many.
Right.
But you could require a bunch of trees up at the, the connection between Freedom Trail and that. So I think we just get specific and say, how many trees do you want up there to block that path?
If he, I mean, if he puts, he's got these two, it looks like two little abandoned Christmas trees.
They're not ready to pick yet.
I mean, I would want to see, I don't know, but the rest of the board, one on either side of them and one in the middle.
Yeah, you could do the zig, that zigzag.
Usually staggering, right.
Yeah, do some staggering.
Three or four more.
But there's gotta be a minimum of three more, in my opinion.
I'm still concerned about the lighting that he put in there, or tried to pass us, pass by us, that shines on the face of the building. I want to see how much is shining beyond the building, above it.
Above it?
Yep. You shouldn't be lighting the sky.
Right.
Try not to do that.
Okay, so we'll ask for more lighting above. So what do you think, minimum three more? I mean, do you want more than three? I mean, you can ask as many as you want.
So can I just ask again, are we confident that 21 that's shown on the plan actually correspond to the reality on the ground? Or do we not even know that?
Well, I think Bill did the, Bill Buckley did the thing, yeah.
The as-built, that's what shows, yeah.
He has built the stamp, so, yeah.
I mean, sorry, I would say a minimum of three to four, honestly. Yeah, I just, I mean, he could drive over these right now.
And the other question is, are we satisfied that trees of that, of that type and height are, are they equivalent to what we asked for, which was those jolly green giant things?
No, six feet, right. Well, yeah, because he could really just go, I mean, at this rate, I mean, he could just dig those up when he wants to go through there, and even if he damages them, he could put in new ones. So it's like, that's why I like a fence and trees, but I'm not going.
So Tracy, why don't we consider just kind of filling up that path a little bit? You know, maybe you put a dozen in and string it, string it down there, back and forth on either side.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a line, it could be a, any...
Oh, I like it.
Yeah, no, that's the better way to do it.
I mean, why would...
I like that.
Yeah, and when I said string them, I didn't mean right on a linear thing, but just, you know, kind of...
Yeah, I think there's got to...
I mean, we could go out there and help him, we could put stakes in the ground and work with them to place them, you know?
I think a minimum of 10.
And do you want them to be the six-feet ones, the Green Giant Arborvitae's?
I think we do.
No, that's an old, that's an older tree that was there. Because this is, this road goes right to his house.
Okay.
Okay, and this, they over here, they had to be clearing earlier.
All right, anything else on that?
Nope, so we'll, we'll ask more about lighting, we'll get a little more clarity about the uplighting, and we will let him know that you want minimum of 10 Green Giant Arborvitae's to block the path, and that, do you think we should go out there and help him stake them out, or do you guys want to trust him to do it?
Well, at least we should make sure that he understands that we want him staggered, not just a line.
I think, yeah, I think probably we should go out, or somebody should go out.
I think before he plants them, maybe we just take a look at what his plan is.
Yeah, in all honesty, I did not make that original sidewalk, so I'd actually kind of like to go out there myself.
Okay. We can get you out there if you'd like. Now's a good time to plant, I mean, the next month is kind of a good time. Okay. All right.
Next item is a request for a fee waiver at 33 Commercial Street.
You have the, I think, I believe you have a letter, but Mr. Dias is here also to, to represent the applicant.
So just to summarize, since we're trying to move along, this is a site plan, it's for a religious use, so that should be noted, that we'll be seeing one coming up for a daycare. You know, educational and religious uses are quote-unquote exempt to some degree. The Planning Board is allowed to conduct site plan review on a limited basis to ensure, you know, things like bulk and height and setback, and things like that. So this is an exempt use, and they have filed now, but the fee, I think you mentioned how much the fee would be, $4,700, so they're looking for some relief from that. And we just, in our office, we just didn't feel that was within our purview to grant such relief, and we thought it was up to the board discretion.
What's your, do you have a recommendation?
No.
Okay.
I don't know that we've ever done it, but we, it's also, it's a little bit new, I will say. Under the prior Building Commissioner, we didn't see these. It was done more administratively, in-house, but since court cases have come down that have shown that the Planning Board can conduct a site plan review, that it, now you are seeing it. So it is a little bit of a questionable area. I mean, $4,700 does seem like quite a bit. You know, we might need to have our engineer review it, so that's a cost to them.
Right.
So I guess, you know, I don't necessarily have a strong opinion. I don't know that it would cost the town $4,700 to review this ourselves, on the limited basis that it's gonna be, so.
Can I just have the representative just tell us a little bit about what's gonna happen?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering.
Can you hold on a second? Is it possible to turn up the speakers? Oh, not you.
Here. Yep, Paul's doing it.
Okay. Could you say something again, Eric?
Sure. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering Solutions. I'm representing the Sandscar Culture Society. They have a religious temple at 33 Commercial Drive, which is really a converted office building. We did bring forward today, we actually submitted a site plan review application to demolish the existing facility and put up a brand-new, a temple, a Hindu temple, something that's gonna be really, you know, representative of their faith and their culture. This site in total is just shy of 18 acres.
Lost you.
You put yourself on mute.
Sorry about that. Hit the wrong button. Site itself is just about 18 acres. We're proposing to disturb about 4.7 acres. So according to your fee calculation, that would be $4,700 for a fee. As a religious use that is nonprofit and exempt from certain things, as Paige said, we thought it might be appropriate to come forward and ask for a reduction in the fees, at least. So we wanted to bring that to the board and have that discussion. We do understand that there may be a fee to review some of this. It is exempt from some areas of site plan review, but obviously, someone has to review it. So we certainly understand that the board needs to take that into consideration as well.
Do we know approximately how much it would cost, result in cost to the town?
It's really, Mike, we were just talking about that. I mean, I think for, you know, the limited use here, and the, it's not gonna be too much, so. We're thinking that between the, the engineering review that would be required and the legal notice that would be required, you know, maybe, since it is a nonprofit, I think that would be the distinction, is the fact that it's an exempt nonprofit. It might be worthy of consideration.
Would you be able to track what the costs for the review and analysis would be, and just have them pay the bill directly, and a small administrative fee for your own time?
No, no, I mean, I don't think we could...
Okay, because I mean, it's, that'd be the fairest way.
Yeah, I mean, either I would say do no fee, or if you had to do a nominal fee of like $500 or something, you know, but I mean...
Would 500, do you think, best estimate, cover our costs?
I think so, right? Because I mean, it's really just, you know, all the time of processing, and then, you know, all our departments review it, and, but it's not gonna be an extensive thing, really, the engineering consultant does it, and they get paid to do that. So I think 500 would be, you know, probably about right.
Gabby?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Works for me.
Yeah, I make a motion that...
So can we just, moving forward, can this be the fee then for a nonprofit exempt use, so that at least we can give guidance for other, if other users come in on that?
I think that's fair. I mean, let's cover our costs. We can't, we can't eat the costs as a town, but we, you know, let's just cover them. We don't need to make money.
Right.
Make a motion to reduce the fee for 33 Commercial Street from $4,700 to 500, to cover the cost.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
The next thing is a bond release for 106 South Street. Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, Mr. Lynch has submitted the as-built plans for the 106 South Street subdivision, and all the work has been completed, so I would recommend that the board release the funds.
So that was in the amount of $23,783.45?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions regarding this specific item, the roadway as-built or anything?
Nope. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We need to set a performance guarantee for the Orchard Place subdivision.
Yes, you have a memo in your packet stating the amount.
$27,231 recommended, that includes a 20% contingency fee.
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem.
Make a motion to, to approve the 27 to 31 bond release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, the request also included the release of the lot in the subdivision. Mr. Chairman, you have the Form K in front of you.
Okay.
Mr. Lynch has submitted, pre-meeting, has submitted the funds necessary, so if he hadn't, I would have recommended that you sign it, and I would hold it, subject to the money being submitted, but we do have the funds on hand.
Okay.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to approve the lot release at, for parcel A and B, at...
Orchard Place.
Orchard Place. 9 to 11 Orchard Place.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yes.
And next, we have a request for a minor modification, 11 Spring Brook Road.
Well, we're waiting for Bill to come up. If you guys wouldn't mind making a motion to, we actually have a typo in here, instead of site as-built plan endorsement for 10 Mechanic, it's a site plan endorsement. So that would be something you'd sign at the end of the meeting, if you wouldn't mind making a motion to do that, would you have that done?
Make a motion to endorse the site plan endorsement for 10 Mechanic Street.
I'll second that. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Bill Buckley from Becca Hone Group, and I'm here representing the applicant, G. Green Properties. And we were here to ask the board for a minor modification to the site plan that was granted for a 30,000-square-foot building at 11 Spring Brook Road. So I think you all have that in your, in your packet. Excuse me. And what we're doing here is, we have a major, a minor modification, but the major change in there is that the building was originally 30,000 square feet, and now it's been decreased to 24,000 square feet. So what we've done is we've lopped off the back of it. And the other thing we've done is we've actually raised the building four feet, and we've raised the site basically four feet. And the reason for that is, is, you know, once the site has been, was cleared, and the owner slash contractor got a chance to look at it, you know, we were looking at, I don't know if you remember, but there was a significant amount of walls around the outside of it in order, trying to max the site out. And so what, he looked at and said, well, you know, maybe we can, we looked at it again, and the main thing that originally why we, the grade was set as it is, is because I, we set the driveway grade coming in, if you remember, I don't know if anybody's been down there, I know Ron has, but you're there at the end of the cul-de-sac, is, we set the grade of the driveway at about 6%, which is kind of what I, in my rule of thumb, is for a commercial lot. Because you have tractor trailers, you have big, big trucks going up and down. So the contractor looked at it, of course, everybody knows he has lots of trucks, so he is, what he said is, look, I can live with a 10% grade on that driveway. So what that did is, that allowed us to pick the lot up a little bit more and eliminate a lot of the walls over on the west side decreased, on the north side, I'm sorry. As you're looking at the plan, the top of the site, we eliminated a lot of wall in this area here. We decreased, the wall over here is now only about two feet wide, two feet high. We took this wall here, which was 11 feet high, and now it's only five feet high. We eliminated this wall completely, and this wall over here, that got higher, so that, where the height got picked up. But the change was a net savings for us. So there's no change in stormwater, there's no decrease or increase in the amount of impervious area, everything else stays the same.
We did check with engineering. Gabby has a memo, do you have that?
Yeah, you, part of your packet, there's a memo that Town Engineer Lance El Priore has a condition that he suggests that the board include.
Don't we read it into the record?
Sure.
Our town engineer said, I believe that 10, that 10% while fairly steep is acceptable for the driveway entrance. The difference in runoff speed should not drastically impact budding properties, but you could grant the change conditional that additional drainage infrastructure may be required, such as installation of a strip drain along the entryway if the board deems it necessary, Lance.
Is that workable for you?
It's fine. We'll just, we'll just add that in there.
Okay.
We'll just do it.
One motion?
Anything else that you have, Paige or Gabby, regarding? Anything else that you have, Paige or Gabby, regarding?
Make a.
They're doing a great job down there, so.
Approve the request for the minor modification at 11 Spring Brook Road with the inclusion of the additional drainage infrastructure as discussed.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's the crafts.
Yes. Don't we have something on Mechanic Street?
No, right here.
No, no, right there.
No, we already, we just approved that. We skipped ahead to that one. Well, Bill came up and you voted.
Okay. I thought we just voted on this, the wording. So it being sometime past 7:10 PM, we have a North End End Zone update from the Craft Group. Good evening.
Hey, guys.
Good evening. Can I set this up?
Nice to see you, Buckwood.
It's good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Five seconds.
While Woody's handing that out for the record, Dan Krantz from the Craft Group, Woody Benefacbeal from the Craft Group, Peter from Goulson and Storson, Derek from VHB are online as well should any questions come up. Good evening, Mr. Jaren, the board. Prior to the first game, we just, regular season game, we just wanted to come in and, and give you an update. When we were in front of you for the North End Zone, there were four conditions and wanted to just give an update on those four conditions. You, you see the letter in front of you. What I would like to do is maybe start on condition two and then work my way back to condition one, which is a little more of the dialogue. So, condition two is really to have a construction schedule and a logistics plan, construction management plan. Those have been included in your package. Feel free to look through them if you have any questions or comments, just, just let us know. We have been operating that logistics plan for the preseason and for all the concerts, and I think they have gone off pretty well, all things considered. And then as far as the schedule, I would say we are at or near, um, our overall schedule with the intention of opening for regular season 2023. So that schedule is included in your package as well. Condition three, the, the applicant shall coordinate with public safety office officials on potential technology upgrades. As you can see, it says that the applicant through Team Ops has been in regular contact with Chief Grace. And I, Chief Grace is here tonight and I would like to leave it, uh, my guys are telling me accurate. Yes, that, on the, so we have a new, a new kind of security system, which I'm guessing the chief could far better explain than I could, but it's called the Evolve System. It's supposed to be better, safer, faster. So we are implementing that new technology phased throughout the stadium. So we look at that as a good thing. And now we have confirmation that Chief Grace actually is, is on board with that. And then the fourth one, in conjunction with the planning board's, uh, future review of proposed field level plaza improvements, we shall provide, um, updates. So we'll give a quick update tonight when we go back to one. And then the second part of that was prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall coordinate with the water and sewer, um, a dye testing. So we did this dye testing. And Woody, maybe you can give Diana the, the results. We did this dye testing in conjunction with water and sewer, Foxborough Water and Sewer with Natural Systems who runs our treatment plant. So we, we did over 4,000 fixtures. And so that, that was done to the satisfaction of, uh, Foxborough Water and we've since had our follow-up and conclusions with DEP as well. So I think we've, we've closed that one. And then during the construction, last, last one would be 4B, the applicant shall submit plans for food service establishments to the Health Department. I would say we're probably a month away from having our food service documents in a position where we'd be able to submit those to the Health Department. But in, in accordance with this requirement, we will in fact do that when, when those plans are ready. So that leaves us back at condition one. And I think, again, I, you guys have, we've been in front of you for 20 years, so you've seen this time and again. So this is our existing conditions. That's in your package as well. Not a lot to talk about there. It's kind of how we operate today, but as you know, a significant amount of this has, has been demolished and, and it's started to rebuild. And I guess I'll speak to just kind of a current construction update first and foremost. So for the home opener, um, about a third of the structure will be in place. The structural steel, uh, the concrete on, on all the levels. We anticipate having a third of the largest outdoor video screen in the country ready for, uh, the home opener as well. So that'll be pretty spectacular. It'll give you a little bit of glimpse of, of what we hope will be something pretty cool to show off here in Foxborough next year. And then we, we look to start to get, as the season unfolds, start to get into some of the site work that we're about to talk about and, um, continue with the building. Right now it's early November. We look to probably top off the steel and, uh, starting as early as next week, some of the exterior curtain wall will be going on. So it's going to start to take shape and it'll start to look pretty good by the time, uh, fans start to arrive on the 25th. And then just by way of an even shorter update on the Craft Group building, Granite Herb are going in today. Later this month, we expect to start, um, landscaping irrigation to try to dress that up for the home opener as well. And, um, we have a TCO for the ground floor, which is our virtual walkthrough room for the football team. They actually got that five days in advance, which was a huge win for everybody. And then we look to, by mid to late December, have, um, our Craft Group and International Forest Products move into the fourth and third floor of, of the new building with final closeout probably going through the, uh, the end of January. So that's my construction update. Um, very quickly on our plaza. It's, you know, the, the theme is, is like the meandering river. So you start to see that, and you'll see that in the color and the texture of the concrete, so that, uh, as you're walking through there, it's just supposed to be a softer, more earthy tone than the, the stark gray concrete that we have right now. We've increased quite a bit of the landscaping as well. We, we have our grand stair, which we saw, um, when we presented to you, um, back for, uh, site plan approval, and that's remained intact with, with a bunch of landscaping. And.
It's gone.
The, the, the big change that you'll see is that we, we currently do our, uh, evolve our scanning and screening right out here outside of the Ticketmaster gate. The intention here is to move that line out into what was currently, what is currently lot 4A. So essentially lot 4A and its 80 spots gets taken up by part of the plaza. This becomes our screening canopy. So once you're inside that canopy, this, this is kind of the screened in the safe zone. And then the idea that, that is, uh, being followed, I guess, is that we would then have three entry points for ticketing. One at the, um, Ticketmaster gate, which is currently adjacent to the Craft Group building, one at the base of the new, uh, grand stairs, and then one in the back of our, our northeast ramp, which will take you, A, up the ramp or B, to the ADA elevator access. So a, a, a lot of vegetation, a lot of greenery, and it's, it's, it should be much more becoming than our, our plaza that we have now, especially now since it's torn up. Ticket office that was demoed and removed is intended to go in this box right here. So this will be our new, our new ticket office. And that's really what it is. It's, it's, uh, it's been vetted with, um, you know, with our parking folks and with our operations folks to try to make this as efficient, uh, process as we can to try to continue to improve that fan experience so that we can get them through the gates as quickly and harmlessly as possible.
When, when does it look like it'll be totally done?
I would say, again, we'll probably look to get a certificate of occupancy for, let's say, September 1st of next year, and I'll, I'll say the odds and ends will roll on for two months after that at a minimum.
Looks great.
Will you be finding plans of, for this?
Yes.
So we'll see this again in the future. This is just conceptual at this time. Okay.
But again, I just wanted to put before the first game and since it was the conditions, I wanted to get that out in, in front of the board so that they kind of know where we're heading and what, what we're trying to do.
Dan, I know it's not a condition from here, but are you folks still taking advantage of the extended work hours? And will you continue to do that throughout the cold weather months?
They are, and I think we'll start to actually see a little bit more of it as we get into the cold hour or cold weather. One of the scheduled things is a week from today, this, we're going to have a 14-hour concrete pour, which will be the, the base of the lighthouse. And then from that, we can really, um, take off and finish the rest of the structural steel. That's been one of the, the hinge pins that we've been waiting for to really go, and, and that will lead us into wanting to do these extended hour workdays.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Looks great. We appreciate the update.
Thank you all.
Good seeing you, Woody.
Good to see you guys.
You too, Dan.
Nice.
Oh, I'd already talked to Dan.
Okay. Being sometime past 7:15 PM, we have a public hearing, special accessory apartment for Christopher and Brielle Brooks.
Evening, everybody. I am Sean Barrett. I'm the architect for the project and I'm also a Foxborough resident. So tonight we are seeking a, oh, and also this guy is Chris Brooks.
Very good to meet you, Chris. Nice to meet you, Mr. Brooks.
Uh, tonight we're seeking a special permit under section 8.1 for the creation of an accessory apartment addition to the home of Chris and Brielle Brooks. The apartment will be occupied by Chris's parents, Tim and Mary Lou Brooks. Our project basically boils down to a garage addition for Chris and Brielle with an apartment above the garage and a new shared mudroom between the main house, apartment entry and garage. I can share my screen on Zoom if you'd like me to walk you through the plans a little bit.
Sure.
Sure. There we go. All right. So at the top of the screen, we have the existing conditions of Chris's house. We have a current garage on the right-hand side here and a small covered porch. I can actually show you photograph of what that looks like at the house right now. No, I can't. How many years does it take for you to learn how to use Zoom? Okay.
Well, once you learn, they change it.
Wow.
Whoa.
There we go.
Like a stadium.
There. There we go. This is Chris's house. What we're proposing is to remove the garage that's on the right side. It's actually not large enough for a car, as we see a lot in these mid-century houses. And then that front porch, uh, you actually can't even open his front door all the way because it hits the, the little covered ar- arning there.
So is the thought to take everything to the right out or keep part of?
We are, uh, actually doing effectively no renovation to the living space of Chris's house. So right now we have his kitchen here. We have the dining room here. And then this is the garage that's being removed, and this is the front covered area that's not really even a porch.
Okay.
And then we'll be adding the new entry through the dining room here into Chris and Brielle's home, putting a small farmer's porch on the front of the house. And then this is the two-car garage with a little entry vestibule mudroom area and the staircase up into Tim and Mary Lou's apartment.
And how big is the apartment?
The total square footage of the apartment is 797 square feet. So this is the second floor, which is the apartment that, uh, that we're asking for. And if you look at your drawings, there's an enlarged plan on A 4.2.
And what rooms will the in-law apartment consist of again?
So the in-law apartment has, uh, an open living dining kitchen area to the left side. And then on the right, there's one bedroom with a large closet and a bathroom at the back of the house. But the second means a vigorous out to a deck in the backyard.
And how do they have access to the main house?
Through the dining room. Down at the garage level, actually, if we go to 4.1 on your drawings.
Yep.
Uh, there's a door from the garage, there's a door from the front yard, and then there's a door up to the stairs and a door into Chris and Brielle's dining room.
Oh, we have doors.
It's, it's a room of doors, yeah. There's going to be co hooks on the wall and that's kind of it in that room.
Okay. Do we have any input from the Board of Health as far as septic goes?
Their, uh, the folder is, uh, with Kevin. Anything from Board of Health?
So I spoke with Matt a couple of times about this project and we are converting an existing bedroom in the house into a home office. By pulling the door off, it's a very small bedroom. It's not really functional as a bedroom for them anyway. So it's a current four-bedroom. We're going to drop one bedroom from the existing house, add one bedroom.
Set the wash.
Yeah. And it's a pretty new septic system, 2021, I believe, was the new septic.
The only comment from the Board of Health is from Matt Brennan. Property 23 West Street is currently listed as a four-bedroom home, has a septic system that was designed for four bedrooms. Therefore, if the property provides a fifth bedroom, an upgrade to the system would be required. In addition, due to the fact the property falls within the zone two, a denitrification system would have to be installed.
And so we're certainly trying to avoid that.
So we'll add a condition that it be limited to four bedrooms.
Mr. Laracy, um, from the fire department, has no issues with the proposed addition. Mr. Welsh, um, orders, no objections. We require an inspection at the end of the construction for evaluation purposes. Generally, you pick those up in the spring. If done sooner than that, it's fine as well. Goes for both applications.
Seems to meet all our requirements.
No concern, Mr. Grace says no concerns from the police department. And. That's it.
I have no questions or issues.
No, I'm fine.
You want a motion?
I just want to know if you're, you know, happy that they get the real nice new dormers on the front and.
Yeah, I joked with my dad. I wanted to move it out when I was 18 and now I want to move back in. So.
There you go. You're a good guy.
Just make sure no one from the public is here to speak.
Anybody from the public?
Here for this, uh, application? Hearing none?
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit of the accessory apartment at 23 West Street with the condition that, um, the entire building will only be a max of four bedrooms.
And all standard.
And all standard conditions.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Next item is a, a public hearing special permit. Next item is a public hearing, special permit accessory apartment, 126 Mechanic Street, Mr. Fairhurst and Ms. Brew.
Good evening. Mike Fairhurst, 126 Mechanic Street.
And Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. Just give me a second, please. Thank you.
Sure.
Again, we're here this evening for a, under section 8.1, accessory apartments, for accessory apartment of 126 Mechanic Street. So this is the plan. I think each one of you has a copy of it. This is a, it's approximately 23,000 square foot lot. It's located in the R40 zoning district. It's probably around 400 or 500 feet. If you were coming from the center of Foxborough, you'd go through the Mechanic Street, I mean, you'd go through the Chestnut Street, Mechanic Street intersection and go probably 600 or 700 feet, and it would be on your left. So this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. As I stated, it does lie in the R40, it does lie in the zone 2. It's non-conforming because of the, it doesn't have 200 feet of frontage and does not contain 60,000 square feet, but the lot was created in 1936. Special permit finding was granted in 1999 to allow the expansion of this pre-existing non-conforming building, and that's over here in this left corner that I'm kind of highlighting right here. So it allowed the addition to be 10, 9.7 feet, where it was currently 10.7. It is an existing four-bedroom home. It's approximately 1,750 square feet, single-family constructed, or initially constructed in 1936. So you can see here on the, the plan, this would be the addition of the house. The interior changes, you have some floor plans in there I could put up there if there are any questions for them. The interior changes of the house will not just be for the accessory building. It will also include a, a new laundry room, a new home office, and a renovated bathroom. The accessory apartment will be over here on the right. The existing one-car garage is going to be torn down, and a two-car garage will be added. The accessory apartment will be over the garage, and it's approximately 840 square feet, which is less than the maximum of 850 square feet. It's a 30 by 28 unit. The outside of the building will be the same as the existing, and you can see on the plans here, I've, we took some pictures of the outside. It will be the same shingles. And siding, it will be, the home will be repainted, it's all will all completely blend in. Alternatively, it might be completely reshingled. It'll be one of those two options. We don't, don't really know yet. You can see the driveway and the front here, it's, it's quite large, and it will stay the same. There's more than enough room, excuse me, for the two additional cars that are required under the, the special permit. The septic system is currently in the front of the house, and as I stated, it is a four-bedroom, but the, they plan on upgrading that system to a compliant Title V system. And because it is a, it's currently a four-bedroom, it will continue to be a four-bedroom, the Board of Health, because it's in a zone 2, typically, the Board of Health has required anybody doing a repair for something in a, in a, in a zone 2, in a water resource protection district. They do require a, a deed restriction so that it can't be any more than four bedrooms. Again, they also kind of work under the same rules that you do. Under, in a zone 2, a septic system has, a lot has to be 10,000 square feet for each bedroom, so this would be a two-bedroom house if this was new construction. But because it is a four-bedroom house, it's considered, again, non-conforming, pre-existing, and they continue to, continue to use, to design as a four-bedroom. It will have a common utilities, again, according to the regulations, and I think that's it.
So in the, in the file, there was, there was a memo from Mr. Shippey in August regarding access, two means of egress that wasn't clear at that time. The elevation plan hadn't been submitted at that time, and the plans did not show clear separation between the units, but now that's been corrected at this point? Okay. Mr. Buckley already addressed the Title V restriction for Mr. Brennan.
So is there four bedrooms in the home now?
Yes. Yeah, so what they're going to do is, so the home is being expanded, and that bedroom is being turned into an office. So there'd be a new laundry room, a new home office, and a renovated bathroom.
Neither police or fire had any conditions or issues with the plan as submitted. And I believe that is it in terms of comments.
Seems to meet our requirements.
I think we're fine.
I think we're fine.
Any questions from anybody else?
So we, do we just need to do the, the normal conditions and...
And the requirement of a four-bedroom.
Imitation of four bedrooms.
And check if there's anybody here.
Yes, I was just going to say, is there anybody in the audience who's here that wants to be heard on this particular application? Hearing none?
I didn't get all the conditions.
The standing conditions plus it has to remain a four-bedroom.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the special permit for an accessory apartment at 126 Mechanic Street with the normal conditions and, and that it continues to be a four-bedroom home.
Public hearing first.
It'll close once you wrote it.
Yeah.
So we're second?
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing, special permit, temporary parking lot, 1 to 3 Turner Road for Mr. Michael Kennedy.
Bill, is this yours too?
Yep.
Is he manned tonight?
While you're waiting, do you want to just continue the 7:45 hearing?
Sure. To when? Do we have a time?
Do we have a time?
We have 25 Chestnut, we have the temple, so I would rather do those first.
So do it at like 8:00 or 7:45?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't gotten the, we haven't gotten anything yet, so it's not even going to happen. Right? I mean, they haven't filed, so, so yeah, let's say 7:45, but chances are, unless we get an applica, the revised plans by tomorrow, we're not going to have time to review them.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for special permit and definitive subdivision at 204 East Street till September 22nd at 7:45 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Buckley.
I haven't started yet.
I have this miraculously showed up. I didn't notice it delivered.
That's what happens when you get a whole crazy.
At least my bridge isn't damaged.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. I apologize in advance for my voice. I'm here representing the applicants, Mike and Kelsey Cummings, who are also here this evening. And we're here before the Board for, under the section 10.4, special permits, in order to apply for a special permit for a temporary parking area, paid parking during stadium, Gillette Stadium events. We've already been before the Board of Selectmen several weeks ago, informally, as required under the zoning regulations, and I don't know what information they gave you, but we've, you know, we took what they gave us, and we've, you know, we put it aside, you know, because we haven't made any changes to the drawings, because, you know, we want to commend, as we always do, is try to take all of the comments we receive from staff and any, and the boards and any neighbors that we take, and then we will make our, you know, we'll go out and do our coordination and make any modifications, and then come back and discuss them with the Board. But, so this property is, actually, I apologize for this. I don't, this is not, you have a more up-to-date rendering than I do, but, so I'm... And the deep rendering you have has a little island here and on Turner Road, and it also has a parking lot across the street instead of the house, which no longer exists. Anyways, the, so this property is located at 1 and 3 Turner Road. It is a duplex dwelling. It sits on a 41,600 square foot lot, and it's at the intersection of Turner Road, which is Route 115 and Route 140, Pierce Street. The property is located in the special use S1 district, completely in it. The S1 district is actually probably 200 or 300 feet more to the north, because it's 600 feet off of Route 1. The site also lies partially in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District in this corner up here in the upper right corner, as you're looking at the drawing. To the right is the zone 2, to the left is the zone 3, so the vast majority of the lot lies within the zone 3. Property is boarded by commercial buildings to the east, which is the, you know, the lawn building here, and then...
Seasonal.
Seasonal, yep. And I was trying to think of the dentist office, but, and then to the north here, which again is part of the seasonal facility. It's boarded on the, on the left side, on the west side, by another duplex dwelling, and off the property to the north, you can't see it, it's not bordering by it, but one of our neighbors again is a residential. So a lot of those residences are in the S1 district. So the proposed parking will consist of a 54 parking space, park, parking lot, you can see it here in the heavier green. It would access off of one of the driveways. As I stated before, this is a duplex, so there's two driveways. It would be this driveway right here, which is more to the east, and it would come in off of the back. The site has actually been cleared, so what it would require is, because this is a special use permit, or a special permit requires the buffering and landscaping that is required in that district. So you see, we have landscaping over here to the west, and that is more dense because it abuts a residence, and then to the north and to the east, it's less dense because that is a commercial. So the, the site would be gravelled, which, and it also would contain certain things on the lot. So this is very normal. The lot would be, it would be, it'd have to be striped, it would have to contain a porta john, it has to be lit in this particular case. They would put lights on the building facing to the north and east portion of it, and there would be barrels on the lot, which you can see kind of here, 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 here. And what we do is we use those to, to mark out the lanes, which is very normal. The lanes are way more than 24 feet wide, which is the minimum standard. So access, again, would be through this point here. We talk about, because of the special permit, it is, we gave an S short summary. So we talk about community needs, so it would provide parking, provides another alternative for patrons, specifically ones coming from the north, Norfolk and Rentham, or from the west, again, Rentham would come in off of Route 140, because if you were coming to a Patriots game anyways, you'd be going in this direction. If you were coming from portions of Rentham and Norfolk, you'd come down Turner or Pierce and either enter one of the lots that are there. Across the street, there's an 800-car lot, and then next door, I don't know exactly how many cars are on this lot, I'm guessing between 150 and 200, if you count the striped parking. Parking lot was consistent standard nine by 18 spaces. The aisles will be marked. The site does not require any additional utilities. Public service will be provided by municipal public safety and state police in the course of their duties during a stadium event. We don't anticipate manpower additional, but, you know, that would be part of the discussion we would have with public safety if they thought that was necessary. Mapboard character, site's located in the S1 zone, again, it's boarded by commercial facilities. This type of use is specifically allowed in the S1 zone. There's no restrictions on the size of a lot, so, you know, it could be the huge lots that Mike Sage has, and, but it doesn't give a restriction. So this would be one of the smaller lots. There is another lot on Pine Street behind it, generally near it. We don't see that any impact on the national, on the natural environment. As I stated, the lot is currently cleared. There would be landscaping put in as part of it if the Board chose to grant it. And then it talks about economic and fiscal impact, so what we said, the town charges a certain amount of parking spaces per year as a licensing fee, and the parking lot will generate, you know, I think it's a $7 per space, although I'm not sure if that's right. Somebody just told me it was $50 a space. But, so it is a minimal amount, but it does generate some. I guess stated, the porta john replaces one porta john per 100 spaces, lighting I talked about. I think in your packet, you'll see that the three closest neighbors, seasonal, the neighbor to the west, and not a direct abutter, but certainly a close enough abutter to the north, have filed letters of support with the Board. One of the things I failed to mention is that one of the main issues we, we hear about is crossing, being, walking on the streets, you know, specifically getting to Route 1 I know was an issue on Pine Street when that project was done, is, so what we, what the applicant has done is they've talked to seasonal, to Jay Handflig, and again, it's in your packet that he has allowed them to access through his parking lot to Pine Street, which would allow, and then you'll get onto the Route 1 sidewalks. So you won't have, they won't have to walk down Turner Road, won't have to walk down Pine Street. They'll be able to access it directly through his parking lot to the sidewalks on Route I think that's it.
So I see letters from his direct residential abutters. Okay, so now I see there's a temporary parking lot agreement from Mr. Handflig.
Yes.
So before, before I ask the Board to make comments, let me just read some things into the record from staff and other comments here. I'll include the, the neighbors' comments as well. First one is from Matthew Brennan. I've reviewed the special permit application that was sent to me regarding 1 to 3 Turner Road. I have the following concerns. The septic system of the property has not been designed yet. The applicant would have to design a plan for a conventional system without the need of a variance. The design plan shows placement of porta potties pursuant to the sanitary code, the state sanitary code, you cannot have a chemical toilet within 30 feet from a house, a street, or a lot line. In addition, if he would like to have a chemical toilet on property used for residential purposes, he would need to apply for a variance or authorization from the Board of Health. See the code, 410 dot 152, previous and chemical toilets prohibited exceptions. Number three, I would strongly recommend that the applicant speak to a housing attorney regarding this proposal. An occupant writes for quiet enjoyment. In the event of an occupant complaint, in the event an occupant complained about the noise from the use of the parking lot, the Health Department may have to determine if a nuisance is occurring to that occupant. the health department may have to determine if a nuisance is occurring to that occupant." From Mr. Fitzgerald, Kenneth Fitzgerald, from the Police Department. "Hi, as discussed, here are some public safety concerns talking points surrounding 103 Turner. Number one, does not fit into existing traffic management plan. Pre-ends, keeping stadium traffic on Route 1 and pre-ends. Traffic safety concerns for vehicles coming from Route 115, island blocks, one driveway. Second driveway would require no or stopped traffic both directions. Three, traffic detail post at 140 and 115 is there to work in conjunction with the other post to maintain a flow on 140. This lot would cause problems slash disruptions. 140 is coned down the center, limiting turns during event days, making egress and ingress from this lot very difficult. No sidewalks for pedestrian ingress or egress. Pedestrians forced to walk through the woods in the dark into other people's tailgate setups. Possibility for fights, injuries, falls, et cetera. Residential unit with tenants concerned for their children's safety and peace and quiet. Limited first responder access, access, pre and post game from the special response district stadium assets would require lengthy response around or downtown units apparatus. If agreement with Seasonal ever failed, where do the pedestrians go? If approved with the requirement for a police detail like Pine Street, we likely would be unable to fill." Let me know if you have any other questions or concerns. From Mr. Shippey, the Building Inspector. "There are some pictures of the lot clearing at 1 Turner Road. I was sending three more as there are large files. Just wanted you to get a visual of the project. The owner is aware not to continue any site work prior to this hearing date, to the planning board hearing. This was dated July 26." So, Mr. Buckley, just since I'm on this, this particular thing right now, I mean, you made a comment that there's been no environmental issues there, but clearly the lot was clear cut and right to the edge. I don't, and I, and frankly, you're an engineer, so you might have had a crew out there to see that everything that was cleared was strictly on the applicant's property, but I couldn't tell that by looking at this. I mean, I can see clearly right through to, to neighbor's land from there. So I presume it was done on his property alone, but that's just enough, you know, an existing condition now. It wasn't existing before that time. Let's see, this is from Mr. Dirk.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
What you're, what you're reading now was dropped off anonymously.
I haven't read it yet.
I know, that's why I'm asking you. It was dropped off anonymously. If you look at the header, somebody whited it out.
Well, I see a subject, you're right. I don't, I don't see, I don't see a, a sender, if that's what you're suggesting.
No sender or anything. So, you know, I, I know why that was prepared. I know who asked for it to be prepared.
You know more than I do.
I know. And that's why I'm asking you that. I don't think that that should be, I don't think anonymous stuff should be read into the record. And that's my opinion, and I know you guys get to decide. I will tell you privately after the meeting, and then you can talk to the person, and then you can decide whether to read it in at the next meeting. But that's, that's just my opinion.
I'd like to hear it.
Have a point of view?
Well, I think we know it's from Jeff Dirk. I mean, we, granted, it was dropped off, but we know Jeff Dirk. We know his credentials and whatnot. So, I mean, I think it's clear it's from him. I don't think it's written from nobody. It's just dropped off by...
Somebody.
Somebody, so.
An anonymous.
And I didn't, I didn't say it was anonymous from Jeff, and you're right.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying that he, they're asking me. I mean, we know it's from Jeff Dirk. We know his expertise. We've seen him before. So I don't know that it's, it's, it's an unknown, it's not an unknown commodity, I guess. I understand what you're saying, is you don't know, or you know who has delivered it, or whatever.
I don't know who delivered it, and the person who ordered that work doesn't know who delivered it. To make it, to make it clear. So, that's my point. But it's not a secret.
Okay. Mr. Dirk writes, "I have reviewed the plan and agree that the location of the parking facility will create additional conflicts in an area that is already congested during game day operations and will conflict with the TMP as it relates to the employee parking lot driveway to the south of the proposed parking lot. I offer the following comments for your consideration. The Pierce Street slash Turner Road intersection operates with extended delay. Turner Road and the Pine Street connection to Route 1 have been the focus of discussion as part of the stadium TMP to limit the volume of traffic." TMP stands for Traffic Management Plan, for anyone who doesn't know that. "Volume of traffic using these roadways to access Pierce Street and the resulting conflicts of the Pierce Street slash Turner Road intersection. The addition of parking to this property contradicts this approach. Number two, the location of the parking lot conflicts with the stadium's TMP for Employee Lot A. The current TMP for Employee Lot A implements advanced signing on Pierce Street just prior to west of Turner Road to inform motorists of the police detail officer head at the Employee Lot A, introducing turning traffic to access the new lot within the advanced warning zone for motorists approaching Employee Lot A from the west-north on Pierce Street in an area with reduced sight lines due to the curvature of Pierce Street to the west of the driveway conflicts with the intention of the TMP. Uncontrolled left turn movements will impede traffic flow. The absence of traffic control to permit left turn movements entering or exiting the parking lot will impede the movement of vehicles along Pierce Street and the careful management of the access point to Employee Lot A and the Route 140 connector road to the south." Let me know if you have any questions. And then finally, we have letters of support from Alicia Santos, to whom it may concern. "I, Alicia Santos, am writing this letter to inform the town of Foxborough that has an abutter to Michael Kennedy of 103 Turner Road. Foxborough, Mass. 02035. I support a special permit being granted for Mr. Kennedy to park cars for Gillette Stadium events." And from Evgeny Kunstavitsky. "I, Evgeny Kunstavitsky, am writing a letter to inform the town of Foxborough that has an abutter to Mr. Michael Kennedy of 103 Turner Road. Foxborough, Mass. 02035. I support a special permit being granted for Mr. Kennedy to park cars for Gillette Stadium events." It says that he owns, and under it says from, it says 1, 3, 9, and 11. Does he, is he in a, the next order abutter? Okay. And then finally, I will read the letter between Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Handflig. Got one sticky finger. It's entitled "Temporary Parking Lot Agreement." "This agreement is between Michael Kennedy, Prendes Kennedy of 1 Turner Road, Foxborough, Mass. 02035, and Jay Handflig, trustee of 113 Washington Street Realty Trust of 60 Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Massachusetts 02184. The trust is the owner of the property located at 113 Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. 02035. The property, property is mainly occupied by Seasonal Specialty Stores Incorporated tenant. The document was created, this document was created to establish a mutual agreement between Kennedy and the trust to allow customers parking at 1 Turner Road to walk through the parking lot at the property in order to get to the sidewalks on Route 1 and safely walk to games and events at Gillette Stadium. The trust shall allow Kennedy to create an access path from Kennedy's property at 1 Turner Road to the tenant's parking lot, provided that no changes shall be made to the property owned by the trust. Kennedy shall approve, shall provide the trust with a certificate of insurance showing proof of general liability insurance and shall name both the tenant and the trust as additional insured. This agreement has been, will be reviewed on a yearly basis, agreed to this 30th day of June 2022 by Michael Kennedy and Jay Handflig." So, questions from the board?
I'd like to hear from the chief. Please.
Yeah, I see some major traffic issues here.
Yeah.
Love to hear what the chief has to say.
Can't see this.
Good evening, everybody. So I just wanna, just kinda present an overview. Obviously, Mr. Buckley and his client have a project that they're interested in. I have no opinion for or against, but I just wanna share my professional knowledge about the traffic management plan, its impact on the community, and maybe a few points or opinions I have about some of the agreements and how this could impact future people requesting parking. So, if we date back, the traffic management plan is very extensive. The number one priority is to keep as many of the vehicles on Route 1, where the parking is accessible and where the public safety personnel are situated to manage them. This particular lot is in the S1 district, but without having an ample sidewalk, clearly creates an issue that if people are forced to take an alternative route, if that agreement falls through, we, you, the town would have issued a permit, and we would have to solve that. And I don't know how we would solve that. The concept of allowing easements from one property to another property to start creating parking lots, town-wide, would really have to be looked at, especially this board, to see the ramifications of that and maybe all of the other potential. People who may want to take this route, if we do it for one, we have to do it for others. The traffic management plan this year, I'm coming out of COVID and dealing with the impacts from the Goth Brooks concert and the weekend concert inundated surrounding communities, Norfolk, Rantham, Walpole, Foxborough, across the board. Extreme work was put in to minimize the impact on all those surrounding towns. Norfolk in particular has been inundated with traffic coming through their center of town on game day. So we have worked with their team to, and that's why those offices are there now. They're not even, they're, Norfolk just takes care of that. I don't have the manpower to manage 115, pre-game, post-game. So we have fixed it. And I'll, I'll never, I'll never say I fixed traffic. I will never own that. We do our best to manage it. We've had great success for the last six events, or all the concerts. We've minimized the impact on the community. We've got the people onto Route 1. We have increased the, the flow into the, into the lots, and it's working well. I would not be able to staff this lot for, if a permit was issued. I can tell you, I'm from Cape Cod to New Hampshire, filling the Gillette Detail. It's a full-time job with the shortages of manpower and law enforcement throughout the state, and that also goes for the state police. There is no extra bodies. There's no one to say, oh, yeah, we're all set, we can make this work. It's not gonna happen. So I just wanna be forward coming with that. The planning board also issued the rear, the employee parking egress for football games through, and then the craft team was here, and they proposed to get the traffic out of the stadium faster using 140 as well. So that additional flow of traffic is a staggered release. It isn't one car at a time. We have a process where we build and build, and we stage them on the private property, and then we pull them. That detail officer works in conjunction with Route 115. So when they see it coming, they hold up 115. From the Rantham line all the way to the employee lots, that road is combed right down the middle.
Yep.
Designed one as a warning system to tell people, but it also prevents turnarounds, U-turns, and left-hand turns, because we have to keep the traffic flowing. So this would be a challenge to all of the pre-existing plans that are in place, for sure. No doubt. And ultimately, my biggest concern as the police chief, sure, we talk about 50 cars, it isn't gonna shut down Gillette Stadium, but the idea that we're considering allowing easements to other people's property to allow parking permits is a concern. Now, we can look at the Pine Street lot and say, jeez, we did it there. The, many of the private parking lots on Route 1, on the old Rodman Ford truck side, Mike Sage's side, were having an issue. They're private, those lots could not dump onto Route 1 fast enough. So I worked with the state, and we modified the traffic management plan. Pine Street is now shut down completely after game day. One, there's no pedestrians, because number one, the road doesn't have any sidewalks. It is not lit, and it is, and the owner of the Lafayette House made it very, very clear that that was a concern. So we fixed the private lots emptying, because they were backing onto Route 1. And we also had to hire an additional officer from Norfolk after the game starts to prevent all the Ubers who wanna come up and would drive as close as they can and clog the roadways. So we prevent that road from ever being clogged, and that's worked well. So that's, so that lot, as a, I mean, I'll just call it pure luck. It has worked out. But otherwise, the alleged cones down the side of the road, hoping that someone didn't get clipped, and then crossing at the end of the street, which wasn't happening, because they, as soon as they saw an opportunity, they crossed into Ron's property. So that's a little bit of a summary of some of the concerns here. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not the engineer, I'm not the planning board, I'm not town council. But those are some things I think we have to look at in how this unfolds.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you for talking.
Any questions?
I, I mean, my feelings, I would not approve this permit.
Well, I guess some other people in the audience.
I know, but I just, I, I just, I know we talk amongst the board first. There's, there's just too many, too many issues here.
I'll give you a second.
And does it, what does the folks?
I have major concerns with the traffic flow. I really do.
And I have, and the easement, I, that has concern for me as well. Just because, you know, this, it's gonna be reviewed, to your point, if all of a sudden they can't go through there, it's gonna be reviewed on an annual basis. So that could, that easement could be yanked.
Can we just clarify that? It's been referred to multiple times as an easement.
It's not.
Right.
It's a letter of agreement.
Right.
So it's not even an easement, good point.
Because we can't grant an easement from commercial to residential.
Yeah, I totally agree. Police department has their hands full, as it is. Always tweaking their traffic plan. That would be a nightmare there. And I go, I'd do that in the section for five times a day. That would be a nightmare. I'm not inclined to, in favor of this.
Yes, ma'am. Just come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm in the Men.
Yep, you just gotta state it.
Because they can't hear you in the audience.
That was my house for 26 years. Didn't think all the trees would be gone, but it's a nightmare. Absolute nightmare, there with traffic. Could you have the people stopping to, for the help? And then you have people going into Seasonal. Then you have 115 coming down. And I actually asked for a policeman across the street, because people would not let people go, you know? So the policeman there helps out a lot. And it's, it's crazy. I've been to more accidents on 115 and 140 in 26 years. You know, it's crazy. 30 cars, maybe, but 50, no. No.
Thank you. That perspective is very helpful.
Huh?
Your perspective is very helpful.
Yeah, and I want the stats thing fixed.
The what?
The sit pool, whatever, the, you know, the toilet thing.
The septic.
Oh, septic, septic.
There we go.
Yes, I want the septic fixed. So, but 30, maybe, but 50, too much.
Thank you.
Way too much. Okay, thanks.
I like the chief said, you know, any easements, that just could open a can of worms.
It's not an easement.
Yeah, we can't do it as an easement.
It wasn't.
Because it's commercial to residential, right?
No, it's not. It's all in the S1 zone. And so it's also, and let me just point out that in the, in the subdivision, in the zoning regulations, under the parking section, it's a different thing. But you can have easements or contracts. it's a different thing, but you can have easements or contracts. So, you can have one or the other under the zoning. So, it's, it's not, you know, I'm just pointing out that this isn't something that's not allowed. It's allowed if you were doing to do something else. So, it's, if, if that's what worries you, and the fact that it's not an easement, it's a contract. Contracts are allowed under zoning. And I can give you examples of, I'll give you, you know, when the, if you guys know, the Rodman Truck Center up on Route 1, on, and that road, that parking lot to the right that never gets used, that was used as additional parking for when the Sandberg expanded its toy facility. So, that was used as parking, and there was a contract. Wasn't granted to him, wasn't an easement, it's a contract. So, just, just pointing that out.
That's the smallest, I think that's the smallest.
Clarification purposes.
But I would also suggest that if you were going to go down that route, that it would require to take a look at the seasonal parking lot, at least create some sort of, whether it be a minor modification of a site plan, because you wouldn't want that access point to dump into another parking, like, that's a parking space where there would probably be cars there, so you'd probably maybe have to cancel out that spot and have it be pedestrian access.
Yeah. I gotta tell you, the easement, the contract, whatever, is the, to me.
Is the smallest.
Is the smallest issue here. So, I, I don't.
But I just think it would, it would require a little more work on the sides of seasonal. I think a letter like that, you'd wanna, you know, have some sort of agreement in place that was really binding, and you'd have to take a hard look at seasonal, maybe also look at the grades between them. I've, you know, just, I just don't think it's a matter of that quick letter, and that, that would be sufficient.
I agree.
Anything else? Any comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, what we'd like is, or a chance to address the issues that you've brought up, and I understand, you know, we've heard all these pretty negative things from the board, but I think it's appropriate and part of the process that we were allowed to go back and look at them and then come back and, and talk to the board again, and we'd like to do that, not the next meeting, but the one after that.
Sorry?
October 13th, you're not here.
I'm not here.
Are you still not here?
Because you're not going anywhere.
Well, I'm not going there, but I may not be. I'll, I'll have to check.
And I, just, just in the spirit of transparency, absolutely, the process should play out, but I also, the traffic component, to me, and pedestrian safety are the two biggest, and I've seen all the wonderful work you've done over the years. There's nothing you, I personally think there's nothing that can be done to address it, and I don't wanna see anybody in our town spend a boatload of money if it's not gonna, you know, get them to where they can reap the benefits. So, I'm not saying there's a predestined answer here, but I just, I just wanna be transparent, but.
Understood.
Unless you can make flying cars or something like that, this is gonna be a very hard sell.
Okay.
Personally. But do you wanna make a motion?
Do you want us to wait until the chairman is back?
Well, I, here, let me just see if I, if I even know on my calendar whether I'm still, um, here or not.
He's very busy.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's my vote, but I don't get a vote.
Yes, you wanna make a motion?
No, I wanna make sure you're back.
Oh, okay. That's October 13? Mm-hmm. I'm here, but it's my anniversary. I don't think my wife is gonna want me to be here.
No, probably not.
Take her out the night before.
What's the next meeting after that?
27th.
Okay.
What do you wanna do?
You gotta take your wife, oh.
Well, I'm not worried about that. I'm, 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 I'm in Tracy's court here, Bill. You know, listen, we handle dozens of these, you know, it used to be every year, now it's every three years, and it, I would say it is extremely rare that we wind up with a lot that's as controversial as this one is. And frankly, I mean, I think that, you know, you and your clients are gonna spend time and treasure trying to figure this out, and I just don't see effects. I mean, it's not that I doubt your abilities, and it's not that I doubt the client's sincerity. I think, you know, I, I think they, I, I could almost assure myself that they went into this, you know, with the best of intentions, you know, and, 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 and a hope for a, a business that was gonna be profitable for them and help them afford the property and everything else. But I just don't think that it, that those things are gonna override the public safety issues, the traffic issues, and how it affects the, the traffic management plan in general. The town spends, you know, an inordinate amount of time. We make the stadium come in every single year, and the police department comes in every single year, along with that review, to say, here's what's new, here's what's old, here's what's been fixed, here's what's, we're still working on, and, you know, it's, it's a big thing, and to have a small thing kind of throw a cog, you know, throw, throw a sand into that wheel, into that, into that gear, is, you know, I don't think it's, to me, it does not make sense. So, I mean, I can't tell you absolutely no unless the rest of the board, you know, feels differently, but I'm, I'm not inclined to continue it. I'm inclined to, to vote on it.
Yeah, I honestly don't see a way to fix the traffic management portion of this, Bill. I'm a season ticket holder. I park at Lafayette House. I come at the end of the game through this intersection, and it's a difficult intersection. Adding this into the mix makes it almost impassable. And Chief is right. He'd need another officer there to try to coordinate with Major Ottery, 115.
Lot A.
Lot A, and the access road. There's just so much in a, under a quarter of a mile, an eighth of a mile. It's, the, the location is horrible for.
I, I, I would still ask not to waste your time or anything. Please give us an opportunity to go back and look at it, and then, you know, we might come back, we might not come back. We might just say, you know, please vote, but give us an opportunity to look at it. We're hearing these comments for the first time tonight.
Okay, so, we just gonna make, we can continue it. The question is, is it to the 13th or the 27th? Kevin?
It would be the 27th.
Yeah, maybe the 27th.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit for temporary parking lot, 1 to 3 Turner Road, excuse me, Road, until September, October 27th at?
Exactly.
There's nothing on the agenda.
7:15.
7:15.
Second. Hold on a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We should also make it clear that the lot, it cannot be used for parking in the entrance.
Yes, and no more. I think there's a, you can't do any work, more work on it.
I know.
Okay, make a motion to turn.
Just for a second.
Second.
Hold on a second.